We'll start with your call, Commissioner Gallin.
Here.
Commissioner Blas.
Here.
Ed Shaw here, Commissioner Schimmel.
Here.
Commissioner Hummel.
Here.
You're also busy with the county clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, please bring us the much needed rain that we need. Please keep our military safe and bring them home safely to their families. Please take care of all the people in the way, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is number five. It's to discuss approved, disapproved. Designate the JJAEP classroom as space for the county judge's administrative assistant, VA officer, JJAEP and client attorney privileged area during county court. And I put that on there. And what that is, is we have a adjacent room over here that we use for Sylvia, for the veteran services offices, for JJAEP and for client attorney privilege when people are in court. And we just want to make sure that everything is running in there smoothly and efficiently. And so I'm just asking that we designate the space.
That's that area right there, right? That whole area right there?
Mm-hmm.
And that area right there, it's still, we're going to designate the same as we designated everything at the annex building?
Yes, and I put the voltage on there when we did that.
Is this going to require any more dividers anywhere if you just designated as is?
I have 50 more. Neva has 50 more if we need to use them, but...
It's going to stay, it's going to remain the same unless needed, the dividers are needed.
Right.
But it's going to, the whole area will be open to the public, right?
The area is open to the public. What we need to do is maintain privacy and efficiency for the county judge's office to be able to run independent of other offices. We need to make sure that the JJAEP is able to be here. When they're here at 4:30, we need to make sure that the client attorney privilege can go on in there and we set up cubicles. And we need to make sure that the veteran services officer has privacy to make sure that his office runs.
Okay, well, so you're just asking to designate it. You're already using it. Y'all are already all using it. Everybody here that you're putting in here is using it already.
Yes. And we ask that it be designated for that space.
I don't have an issue with it. We did it over here. Was it on June the, June the 6th, 2011? Those are county offices on the square.
We just need to make sure it runs like a business.
Or in other words, if I have a meeting, I'm coming here next week.
Surely.
Well, you know, for my thoughts, attorney-client privilege would be behind closed doors rather than an open area.
What we do a lot of times, Carl, is these guys come in here, and I have so many new attorneys coming in here on county court day. It's just amazing. Our document has grown tremendously. And we try, they try to go anywhere they can to get privacy. Some of those guys will go outside, but some of them will sit those little things up and go sit behind them. It just depends on what the attorney does and what that person's comfortable with. I mean, nobody needs to be walking up and down the aisles, listening to everything being said. Nobody usually does that. What we need is, these guys have got to have a place to go. Just like over there, Denise, in your place, where you hold district court. You don't have a lot of space for people to go behind closed doors. So they kind of go out in the hallway or they'll walk outside. But these people do have a right to that without disturbance. And that's all, that's all we need. And sometimes they'll go outside, sometimes under the tree out there is a very popular area. Sometimes in here, some of the guys will take some of those dividers and just kind of pull them around and sit there. And they're kind of head to head talking with their clients. We bring people from GO, from jail, from whatever. We sit there, and we do the best we can with what we have. And we just need to make sure it keeps running smoothly. Or will run smoothly. And just run like a business, that's all I'm asking.
Do the attorneys do set up dividers or get them behind them?
They're open there in that little deal, like when the juveniles come in, you see how, like a lot of times, and I'm sorry that I'm giving you County Judge's Office 101, but when the juvenile sit in those little cubicles, sometimes those guys will take those, like the children can sit in them facing this way. They will take them and move them that way just to block off everybody and kind of sit there and talk and go through paperwork and do stuff.
But do they believe that it's something that they can't speak of here, they go outside?
I let them use anything they can, anything they want to use. And they have that right. They have the right to be in here.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with this. I'll make the motion, but would you, is there any comments or anything like that?
I just want it to run like a business. If anybody has anything to come in here and take care of business, let's take care of business and move, just like any other county office. I just want our offices to run independently and smoothly. And with, I mean, we have people coming here. The county judge's office, I have people coming here. And sometimes things aren't good. Sometimes people just want to ask for help or might, you know. And people have pride. They don't need people to sit around listening to what's going on. It just needs to run like a business. In not an open public area that just people gather in.
Okay, well, basically, I mean, we've done it for everyone else. I don't have a problem with that. I'll make the motion to approve designating the JJAEP classroom as space for the county judge's administrative assistants, VA officer, JJAEP and client attorney privileged area during county court.
How's it?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Number six is to discuss approved, disapproved amendment of modification of contract order number EROIGSA-11004-P00008 and allow county judge to approve if executed. What that is, is that's another GO deal that we need to do the pass through for. It's, you know, that's another tree I kind of quit killing because y'all never lived in those. It's a mutual agreement of parties. It's an amendment to an ICE agreement. And it's to revise the monthly transportation, transportation rate from 65, 139 to 2803 kind of thing. And it's stuck at, Luana and I just get stuck in passing through.
Are you doing the motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve amendment of modification of contract order and allow the county judge to execute and approve.
I see.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Okay, number seven is to discuss approved, disapproved security system for Park A and Park B at the Karnes City City Park upon completion of a county jail on property purpose for the new jail site. And I put myself and Mr. Pippen down as that one. If you'll look in your package, please go to, there's a city or Karnes City letter in there. And it's addressed to me at the top. And Carol and I think we got together and this has been, Mr. Pippen, we did take the June minutes to Mr. Pippen. But y'all remember when we put the eight cell, I mean, the beds on there? And it was really, there really wasn't a change. I think we did this June 37. But if you'll flip the page, where is Luana? Can I ask you a question, Luana? Are you here?
Mm-hmm.
Luana, when they sent us to that, you sent me that deal saying, well, this wasn't in commissioners' court about the six to eight beds. I don't think it said anything about, we didn't...
No, it didn't.
Okay, it did. But then now they ran the notes in full for us. And it says, also to be included in a motion was a security system to be provided for Park A and Park B at the city park. And when we, when we do the jail, if we do the jail, we're going to have a security system in it anyway, which is what was discussed about putting cameras so the park would be a safer place? You know, like just a, and we did talk about that that night at the meeting. And Pete, you were there. I'm late, yes.
It's over here, right?
Yes. And so we talked about that, and we had not captured in our motion. And Mr. Pippen wanted to make sure that we came back and revisited that to ensure that we were going to do what we said we were going to do. And he wanted to have it in a motion. And since we had agreed to that, I put it back on here. Not that we had agreed to it, but it's something that they asked us to do. And that's what they agreed to. And since we said that we would consider all that stuff, I bring it back before you two consider.
Okay, I don't remember. We would monitor, we would monitor when they provide the cameras. I mean, did you, or did we provide all?
You know what? I think that, I think the way the discussion came about, and I might be wrong, and see if this is kind of something you might remember, was we were going to have cameras on the outside of the building anyway. And then they said, okay, so you'll monitor the park. But we're not going to miss it. The cameras are going to catch everything. And so it was part of our security system. And it was just a little added plus that we monitor for them. And we make sure that we monitor those screens to make sure that the park's not being vandalized or that something's not happening within the park. I mean, they felt that, they felt that they were doing something for us, that they wanted the perks of the security camera and the beds, you know. But they wanted something in writing. And truthfully, Pete, it's stuff that we're already going to be doing. It's not like, I mean, neither one of these, we've always transported at county cost. No city has ever donated, no municipality has ever donated to transport. Vi, does anybody ever donate? When you got here mayor's, did anybody ever donate to transportation or anything?
Mayor Paul, city, it was the sheriff's department to take care of anybody.
Yeah, but sometimes, sometimes some of them do do it. Like in the past, some of them have done it. Not here, but in other counties. But I don't think we've ever had anybody.
Ever since I've been here, no.
See, and I don't think, so I don't think we've changed anything. They just want it in writing.
I got it.
So that we said we, we would go, you know, kind of to make sure that everything's on board and above board.
Okay, like right here, I don't have an issue with it because we're going to have to have it secured anyway. So it's going to be there anyways. Number seven, you're number seven?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. And right here is a, a security system for Park A and Park B. And Park B, is that the one that's way over, way off, over there with that little leg thing over there?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's Park, that's B. I understand Park A is going to be the one that's initially right there in front of, in front of the jail. I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. But Park B, most of the cameras, even the, even the real high dollar cameras, they go, what, like 300 foot, 300 feet that you could visibly see it? They don't go, I mean, I don't know beyond that. It may, I don't know what the expense is beyond that.
I know they didn't ask us for anything, but they did not ask us to go put out separate cameras anywhere.
That's what I'm trying to say, because if you're going to, if you're going to...
The point I'm getting at is, is if I remember right, any cameras that are on our property, we would provide. Any other cameras that they wanted, they would provide.
That's what I, that's what I remember. Y'all want to pass on this?
Is that, is that in writing or is it just...
No, no.
Like it's on their motion?
It's just in writing.
I want to be super safe, I want to, I want to keep...
Do you want to pass on this for just a second? I can have Mr. Pippen come down here.
Yeah, just, I did, I think it's like Park B, right? Because that one's way out there. And I know, like I said, the cameras usually are, what, like 300 foot, real clear, visible, even at night. But beyond that, I'm not sure what the camera expense would be. And even if we'd have on the building something that could, you know, aim that way and reach that far without maybe putting up an extra pole or, I don't know. Park A is no problem because that's right there.
You want to come, you want to pass it quick?
Yeah, pass it and come.
I have a question for our assistant county attorney, Ms. Yoder. Did she, or is she stopped out?
Yeah, but the, the security on the park, I don't want anyone in the county to think the commissioners' court is going against the security. So no, we're 100% for it. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there. But I'm, I'm just questioning Park B because it's way out there.
It's really, I mean banners are expensive and signs are expensive. And it really comes down to getting the word out there so people know on this certain day. Because you know, I know a lot of times, you know, word gets out by word of mouth and then it's like, yeah, you know, hey, let me go back and my cousin just called me.
And we'd like to be able to promote it through the newspapers and like you said, the highway signs. We have a couple of banners that we can update if we can get enough funds to be able to do that.
And some four by eights as well.
Yes.
And we can also put it on the calendar. They'll do that. They'll use with Campbell and Clyde's not here.
Right, but we call them, we do.
Oh, Dorsey and his, hey.
We do it for eight years. We always send them information.
Well, I'm gonna say 20% of that because, you know, insurance companies pay 80% of the cost. We pay 20. So I think 20% of our share, I think is a fair number. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say 3,000 on the support from the county.
Plus the personnel.
Plus personnel. I mean, and that ain't even bringing up to 50-50. I know, probably everybody here has got tires in their precinct on their county roads. It's a big problem.
So Jeff, like when this comes in, do the guys like run around down the county roads and pick up a few trailer loads and bring them in?
We have some places that we need to clean up. I got some in some pre-clans where they've gone on the bridge like on on the road just outside of town over here in duty. But it's most probably got a trailer loading tires that are going to need the bridge and I need to get out there and pick them up.
Okay, so y'all make a wrong, y'all make a wrong before this comes in?
I'm gonna try to have on that Saturday, since it's gonna be a cleanup, I'm gonna try to have my whole crew out there for half a day. And it's a plus for us. It helps us. And it's just a winning situation.
Oh, that sounds great, man. If you have everybody out there early in the morning picking up tires, that can be, yeah, that sounds real good.
So we're looking at 20% of the contribution is what we were deciding, the $15,000 event, Karen?
Yes.
So we're looking at 20%, we're looking at $3,000 in personnel support.
No, that, that's.
But we want to say 3,000 versus 20%, just in case it changes. So Luana has a set number, so we have more to make.
3,000.
$3,000.
Plus.
Plus employees.
Plus personnel.
So then I make a motion that we amend the current year budget for Karnes County financial and personal support for the successful completion of this project. The amount of $3,000 in personnel.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries. Okay, Karen, let's do your last one real quick and I got the whole one this time.
And the second one, number nine, is just to request that when you're doing your budget for next fiscal year, you consider adding a financial component to it to support this, to support future waste collection events. Sarah is committed to continuing our support of those types of events. I want to make sure that they can continue to happen. And so what that, that's just asking that if at all possible, you could put it into your future budget so that you know that you have some funds available. We know what you have available and what we would need to add to it, type of thing.
That's basically the same, all we have to do is.
It is exactly the same.
Karen, would it be for only one event or two events?
That would be up to you guys, really and truly, depending upon the amount that you would want to support. Sarah only has enough for maybe one event. So if you've got more money, obviously, we would, we would definitely plan and, and make sure two happened if that was what you wanted.
Well, we could put it in there for two and if the new commissioner didn't have two events a year, then just don't have two. But if you don't put it in there, you can't use it.
So if we did that, it would be, because we could look at the $20,000.
Well, you know, this 3,000 is for one event. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes, and that's your consultation.
So if you had two events, it'd be 6,000.
But again, I'm not guaranteeing that Sarah will do two because that would be another 12,000 and 12, 24,000, you know, from Sarah.
What I'm saying, if we don't put in an event, Jeff, then.
You could say up to two events supporting $3,000 in personnel support on each.
Yeah, well, if Sarah could contribute to a second one, we'd need the whole 15,000 and then the 3,000 from the first one. So we'd be looking at approximately 18,000.
That's if we're, that's if we're gonna do another one.
And that's if there's not ACOG grants available.
Correct. It always applies. Well, and there are not for next fiscal year. We do know because they've already ran it and we didn't get the application, we didn't get.
No, yes, there's not.
So there's not for next fiscal year. I know 2013 and '14 are already gone, I think.
I don't know if y'all noticed the recent spike in tires. I mean, maybe due to the oil field, they had blowouts. And a lot of times, they change those tires where they change them. For some reason, they don't get, they don't take the blown out tire with them. Have y'all noticed that? So we got a big problem here. And I'm sure Commissioner Dugneck, when he comes in, he's gonna wanna have this event. And I'm sure he's gonna wanna have it twice a year. And it's.
Let's just look at what we're gonna budget.
Okay.
This budget for this guy would take like, we can make it next time.
That's true too, you know, with noise and every, I mean, there's more people coming to town, there's gonna be more stuff on the, on the roads.
Basically, we're jumping from here from number nine, the way I look at it, from financial support to completely doing it ourselves. I think we should keep it the 6,000 as a financial support because that's what number nine, we're coming in as financial support for Sarah. Now we're talking about actually doing a whole one ourselves. Then we should keep it the way that number nine states as financial support. 3,000.
3,000.
And possible two of them, 6,000.
And then if we want to discuss it during our budget workshops to fund a full event on our own.
Yes. Right, exactly. Then, then we can discuss it, but here it's just for the financial.
Yeah, I, yes, that's fine. But you know, what we're doing here, when we put that 6,000 in the budget, then it can already start maybe planning and asking for two events.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We can put it for financial support for two events and then they can see if they're gonna work it out. And plus personnel.
Well, that number nine.
It has personnel, personal support. Well, I'll make, I'll make that motion for 6,000. That's for two financial, to support two of them. Financial support plus the personnel support for two of them. If two are done by Saturday.
3,000 per event.
3,000 per event, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna make sure.
Colin, David, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries, five zero.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Pippen's here.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Pippen's here. Can we back up to number seven? Mr. Pippen.
Yes, ma'am.
We have discuss approved, disapproved, security park system for Park A and Park B at the Karnes City, City Park upon completion of the county jail and property purchase for the new jail site.
I may apologize for, for being late. I forgot.
That's okay.
Had to do with, but you're in too quickly. I'm Asian, you put me, so.
I guess the question arose, Mr. Pippen, was Park B, is that the pond?
Park B is the pond, the fishing pond, and I do plan to build a theater there, I hope in 2013. Outdoor theater for the community to utilize. So we were kinda concerned about security there.
We were, we were concerned, we're asking about Park B, the security system on the jail. That's, because just from the jail, where it's gonna be across that block, usually a block 300 feet. And then you're talking about the distance of the railroad track, which is probably about 50, 60 feet. We're jumping that close to 400 feet. And then off to the end of there, we're, we're looking at maybe 700 foot at the 300 foot block. So we're looking at 700 foot. And I don't know what the security system cameras, if they'll, they'll visit, you know, how clear they're gonna be. 70, 700 foot, even if we could have a security system that would reach 700 foot. So Park A wouldn't be an issue because that's right there where it's at, covering it all up. And unfortunately, we want everyone to be saved there at the parks. We're just wondering about Park B.
I concur with y'all's discussion on this. I would prefer Park A. That's the most important part to me because of the playground equipment with the young kids.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
I'm also adding, I hope a walk-in trail in the other portion of Park A and Park B. It'd be a nature trail. I'm gonna look at that in 2013 also. That perhaps, instead of going all the way to Park B where the bathroom facilities are at, to utilize that for our walk-in trail because I might put some lights up and et cetera. Y'all would consider that?
So you're not asking for any additional cameras for us to go put in Park B. You're asking us to do the best we can from the jail site with our cameras?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Pippen, I don't, my recollection says that, that we would have cameras on the jail site. And if there's any additional cameras that y'all will put them up out in the park area, is that correct?
I think I remember making a statement at the city where we'd be glad to, to participate if the cost was gonna be too vast. I think I made that statement at the council meeting. So we'll, we'll be more glad to, to participate with the county if that's your desire.
So I mean, but you're just asking us to do the best we can from the jail site?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're doing.
Of the outside of the jail site.
And then, then we'll look at it after that, if y'all don't mind.
And so if we ever, you know, if you guys ever decide to put standalone cameras or something in Park B and ask us to monitor them or something, that could be in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, now we're gonna see a problem.
So can we capture that, Carol, please, just to make sure that it's just, that this is the jail cameras that we're using to monitor the best we can, Park A and Park B, correct, Mr. Pippen?
That's correct. I think I'll meet the condition set by the city council.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it very, very much.
Sorry that I ran you down. I'm good at it.
But may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
There seems to be a slight dispute on insurance costs for a fire department. I think Charlie talked to you. Are you gonna put that on the agenda for?
8:14.
On, on, next week?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna come see you, 8:14. And I need to talk to you today.
Okay.
But I wasn't gonna do it here. I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
And then we'll get that on the agenda. And I'll ask Carol to help me find some stuff. And you can help me find some stuff. And we go from there, how about?
Because I'm gonna go ahead and pay for it. I, I can't afford to wait for the county to determine whether it's, you have a contract or not.
But, but I, I promise we'll have it on the agenda on the 14th. Charlie already called me after this agenda was done, I'd be on this one. I'm sorry.
Okay. Colin, when you're ready to have this discussion.
All right, I'll call you.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
We make a motion to approve a security system for A and Park B at Karnes City's park on the completion of the jail, on the property purchase by the new jail site, for cameras for our use, best of our use.
For the cameras that are already gonna be installed on the jailhouse and we're just gonna do the best we can monitoring A and B. Anything in addition, the cities said that they would go ahead and help us with any other cameras.
Okay. That's it, yes.
But they might monitor their cameras in that.
That would be another discussion.
We can always work together in the future.
And we will for the safety of the people.
That's right. We're all in it together.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries, five zero. Number 10. Number 10 is discuss approved, disapproved, acceptance of donations from oilfield companies, companies, oilfield companies, companies, individuals that may wish to donate to Karnes County for the purpose of hotel accommodations for DPS troopers working special assignments in the Karnes County area. I put that on there. And I'll tell y'all how this came about. We're, we're working these special forces or whatever, where the troopers are coming in.
Task force.
And, yeah, sometimes they call them the sweeps, sometimes they call them task force. I never know what they are. You'll hear it different from the different troopers. But they're coming in and they're helping us, you know, monitor the highways, monitor the roads, do the best that they can. And the discussion came up when we, we went to a trooper luncheon, they came up that lieutenant said, well, I asked him how we could get, you know, more enforcement or more with, you know, the traffic and the truck complaints and school getting ready to start and whatever. He says, well, I'm killing my guys because we're bringing them in from Hayes County, we're bringing them in from Travis County. And we're bringing them in, you know, that they're driving to get down here. Then they're trying to work a shift and they're having to drive back to wherever they go. And, and I, I asked him, I said, well, what is the reason for that? And he says, well, state rate for hotel rooms is $79 a night. And what the rate that they're having to pay at a local hotel is approximately $220 a night, in that range. And they can't afford it. And so the oilfield companies are always asking, how can they promote to public safety or give to public safety or do something? So when we were there, there was the oilfield companies there. And I said, well, why don't you guys get together and work on that? And everybody thought, well, okay, that'd be fine. Well, then it came back to DPS that we cannot accept donations, being a state agency, from private companies that wanna donate for trooper stuff because, you know, we're gonna give everybody tickets. It doesn't matter who they are, but we don't wanna get accused of anything.
Give it to the goods, right?
Give me all the tickets you want. But we, uh, so when, when it came about, we couldn't do it like that. So what ended up happening is for us to be able to get these task force back in here and help with public safety. And they are willing to come. They're willing to do things. They're willing to come. They're willing to help. But they can't, they can't take donations from the oilfield companies. So what I, what I did is when I was, I was at trial training last week and I was with Judge Hodges. And I went and talked to him about it because it was all about DWIs and whatnot. So I asked him, I said, you know, we're having a big problem with that. You know, new road, new whatever. And we're trying to set up something to get some extra troopers in here to do these sweeps. It's, you know, we don't know what time any of these are. And I told him about this idea and how DPS could not accept donations from private companies. And he says, but in the best interest of the county, the county can. And so he told me he would get with Jim Allison, who is Texas Association of Counties, he's a general counsel, and see if we could do this and if everything was on the go. And they sent me to the Local Government Code, Section 81. And I put that in his package. And if you'll go to page 11 of 13. Section 81 over two of the Local Government Code says, "Acceptance of donations in quest. The commissioner's court may accept a gift, grant, donation, request, or device of money or other property on behalf of the county for the purpose of performing a function conferred by law on the county or a county officer." And so I had a talk with Judge Hodges the other day and he said that that was fine to go ahead and, and we could do it. I could put it on here. I just had to run it past you guys. Anybody wishing to donate or anything would put that in a fund. And then Luana would directly pay the hotel from us, from Karnes County. So that would.
The bill's gonna come to the county and then we're gonna pay it on this one?
But we would directly pay for troopers' rooms. The troopers would have no, no, but that way, these guys aren't on the road fatigued. They're not on the road driving back to Hayes County. They're not on the road driving back to Travis County. And we're not wearing them down to nothing because we're just down 400 something troopers in the state of Texas and we're killing them.
So would it be the difference of what they get or is that?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. It'd be like the $79, like they would pay, we would pay above that rate.
Okay.
They won't accept like, you know, just a total. We would pay what the state doesn't cover, get to pay.
But I'm thinking some of these hotels might possibly adjust their full rate for the.
The answer was no.
Well, they're gonna have security there at that hotel. I mean, if you got troopers staying there, I mean, I would.
They, we, we had, I had tried to work on some of that. I wasn't being successful with that. And that's when we kind of came up with this idea. And so.
Could you as a group, I mean, as commissioners, could you go and, I mean, on behalf and, and ask and, you know, like, because that sounds like a lot of money kind of above, like, you know, it seems like, yes, everything costs more in Kennedy, you know?
But, I mean.
Way to get them to, like, go to servicing the community. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, you did. I saw your reaction. I'm sorry. But it was one of those things where, I mean, are we putting pressure on businesses to do stuff that we don't, you know? And it comes from that way. And oilfield is willing to participate. We need, okay, it was a supply and demand thing. We needed troopers. What was the easiest way to do it? I mean, I don't, the easiest way was to come to front at commissioner's court to go ask companies to do something. Can we really put a heavy on them as commissioner's court? I don't think so. You know, kind of, I don't wanna get us in trouble. And the, sitting, sitting down and beating this through with the different people that I've talked to, this was the most logical, simple solution. And so we do have oilfield companies that are willing to do it because we have people that are, you know, complaining about how they drive or what they do. And, you know, we'll ask them, hey, can you send something, you know, can you tell your people that, that, you know, they're flying through school zones? Or can you tell your people that they're doing this? The answer comes back from the oilfield, arrest them. Tell, you know, tell somebody to arrest them. So then the troopers are like, well, you know, and everybody, I mean, we just, there's not enough people in here to be with every school bus. There's not enough people to be with every school zone. There's not enough people to be on every highway. And so we're running these task forces and it's happening all over Eagle Ford Shell.
And I think it's a great thing that we're, we're having more of a command now, so we can accommodate them.
Anyway, so that's how I got to this point. And the reason I put on there oilfield companies, companies or individuals, I didn't wanna limit anybody that wanted to donate. Because we can, yes, Mr. Dorsey?
Isn't there a Texas state law that they have to put the rates on, inside the doors? And are those rates, like you said, $200 a night, are they posted? Are they breaking the law? Are they price fixing?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I, I, you know what? I'm sorry, but they're in the city of Kennedy and I'm not, I'm not sure we wanna go, yes, yes, Mr. Dorsey?
I, I received a very disturbing phone call this morning, and this is not the first one. A guy called who was desperate to find a house for him and his three children and his wife. They doubled his rent in ten years. He found a house in Pawnee and they wanted $1,000 a person for that house. Now, I think we're having a problem with this camera. Yeah, let it do what you're talking about, but it's very similar.
But let's just go back to the agenda item because we're gonna have to move on because I have, I have another workshop coming in at 10. Mr. Henderson will be here. So I'm not, I don't wanna limit anybody. It's oilfield companies, companies, individuals. Anybody that wants to donate, anybody that has any money that they would like to donate to a trooper fund. I'm just asking, I'm coming for y'all to ask. And all it is, is for hotel accommodations. It's not for food. It's not for any other purpose. It can't be used for any other purpose. It's strictly hotel accommodations for law enforcement in Karnes County. Nothing else.
I have a question for Luana. Do we have to designate this a certain fund?
That's on the next item.
I make the motion to approve acceptance of donations from oilfield companies, companies, individuals that may wish to donate to Karnes County for the purpose of hotel accommodations for DPS troopers working special assignments in the Karnes County area.
Second, I'm second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries, five zero. All right, Pete, here we go. Number, number 11, discuss approved, disapproved, creating a special budget or amending the budget to create a special fund, to create a fund, excuse me, the word special is not in there, for donations from oilfield companies, companies or individuals that may wish to donate to Karnes County for the purpose of hotel accommodations for DPS troopers working special assignments in the Karnes County area. And that would be, uh, when I, when I was talking to Judge Hodges, Luana, I don't know if he said amend. I mean, he said that we have to create, so amend. It'd have to be a creating that line item, which is an amendment because you're, you're changing your budget.
Once we have donations, we will accomplish that. It's, the court can grant the authority for it now, but there's nothing to be done now until we actually start receiving funds.
Okay, now how do I do that? Because I already have companies calling, ready to make their donations.
Make it out to Karnes County. At the point in time we receive anything, we will establish a special fund. And then we'll have to establish a dollar amount based on the number of contributions. If we wanna go, you know, if we're anticipating $6,000 worth of contributions and then we'll have $6,000 line item for expenses in this current budget, then we'll put it in next year's budget, which won't involve anything special amendments.
And I know they were looking at something like, I can't remember how many rooms a night, but they were telling me so. I mean, we have, we have companies that are just jumping to the bits to be able to throw that money in that trooper fund.
Okay. So it's no problem to do it, but we have to have actual dollar amounts before we can do the specific amendments.
Okay, so we have some that are asking if they can come on on 8:14 and present your checks. So can they?
Certainly. Okay.
So then we just pass on this item, Luana, until they bring the money?
Well, actually, you can go ahead and take action on this item. I just can't create anything in the system until I have.
But we can approve creating it. Okay.
So it's exactly the way it reads right there, right?
Mm-hmm.
I make the motion to approve creating a special budget, amending the budget to create a fund for donations from oilfield company, companies, individuals that wish to donate to Karnes County for the purpose of hotel accommodations for DPS troopers working special assignments in the Karnes County area.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Of course not. Motion carries, five zero.
Okay.